Everybody please stand for the flag.
Pledge of Egress to the flag of the United States of America and to the public wherever it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, July 16, 2019. The time is now 7:16. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, notice of this meeting was published in the November 29, 2018, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci. Commissioner Evans.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry. Here, I can't hear you.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Excuse me, Alani. Your mic somehow went down, so maybe try to pull that closer, if you can.
Can you hear me?
That's better.
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay.
All right, let's go to reports. I have various monthly reports for the Department of Public Works. Commissioner Evans.
I have a report for the Code Enforcement Department for the month of June and for the second quarter.
Commissioner Petrakko.
I also have my report for public safety.
Bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for July 16, 2019. Public Affairs, $103,385.92. Revenue and Finance, $3,340,102.42. Public Safety, $55,384.67. Public Works, $18,669.00. Parks and Public Property, $360,502.76. Water Utility, $85,585.87. Total Payroll, $814,823.50. Per Grand Total, $4,778,454.14.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for bills.
Public comment on agenda items only, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing on the, let's move to Commissioner announcements. Commissioners, any announcements? Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Yes, this Thursday at 7 o'clock in the Mud Hole, we have a concert in the park featuring Jersey Sound. Everyone, please say a little prayer or have some good intentions that the weather cooperates with us and we don't get that want-to-jerain that they're predicting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, mine's just a reminder, October 11th, the mobile unit for the DMV will be back in Nutley down on Park Avenue as soon as I ask Commissioner Tucci if they can come back. And they will, this time they're telling us that we'll actually be able to do motor vehicle registrations, or inspections, there's too many inspections this time around. So, mark the date, October 11th, it's a Friday in October.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to thank the Commissioners and your departments for all your help with the Fourth of July, it was a great night. We had over 5,000 people that showed up by the end of the night, and we had a great fireworks display and a great day before that. So, thank you all for your help. Let's move on to ordinances. Public hearings, Commissioner Evans.
Thank you. I have a public hearing on a salary ordinance adjustment to add the role of an elevator inspector, as well as to replace my retiring plumbing inspector.
Anybody wish to be heard on ordinance number 3421?
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Evans, I understand you explained the ordinance in the back very well, but I was just curious, you said that, if I understand it correctly, we're paying for half of, and then one of those salaries, health insurance, is that correct?
It's actually less, less than half.
Less than, then why, why is everybody else who's higher in independent contractors, they're not paying benefits of health at all, but yet we are?
Yeah, so, we, by and large, we don't, but when it comes to building inspectors, plumbing inspectors, in order to have someone who has a master's plumbing inspector's shield, a master plumber, with a shield, we want to have somebody who's more dedicated to our town, similar to the way our previous plumbing inspector was dedicated to our town. And the arrangement's a little bit different, so this particular plumbing inspector will split his time in two towns, and the other town has made the same arrangement. So, it's a very good deal for us because the salary cost is, in effect, if you look at the salary cost, the benefits, and the pension of the old inspector, overall, we're spending quite a bit less money to do that.
But the town is, are we in cahoots with this?
Cahoots, did you say?
Yes, cahoots. We're paying half of his medical, and they're paying half of his medical. But if he has a master plumbing license, technically, they operate as an independent contractor.
He, he does not, he's not operating his business anymore, he's actually doing inspections full-time, and he works in two towns. And his arrangement in the other town is part-time as well as it is in Nutley, and when he goes, the way it will work out, he will be below the number of hours that's necessary for him to work in that other town, for them to pay his full benefits. So, just the differential in his co-pay, we're picking up that amount.
And is his, is his contract with this other town, is that mere ours, so that we don't have to worry about something affecting his other contract that we're going to wind up paying?
No, yeah, we, yeah, we have no obligation to pay more under medical benefits than we're paying right now.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Oh, this is, I'm sorry, this is the public hearing.
Yes.
Anybody wish to address this ordinance number 3421?
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Let's move through resolutions. Commissioner Tucci.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Township of Nutley Department of Parks and Public Property has determined the need to dispose of certain municipal vehicles and equipment that are no longer useful, and they have come to the end of their practical term of services, whereas Township of Nutley Department of Parks and Public Property has identified the following as not practical to continue in service with the township: a 1995 Club Car Electric Golf Cart, a 2002 Bluebird Model F-134 554 Bus with 104,000 miles on it, and a 2002 Chevy 2500 Heavy Duty Pickup Truck. Whereas Township of Nutley has gone out to bid on June 18 through Resolution 17019, and has received one offer from Marzax Inc., 247 Central Avenue, Metuchen, New Jersey, for $269 total. And whereas the Nutley Department of Parks and Public Property has made a determination to reject the $269 bid for municipal vehicles, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that we reject the offer in the amount of $269 from Marzax Inc., 247 Central Avenue, Metuchen, New Jersey. I move the resolution, and I'd also like to add that we will be receiving more money by scrapping this equipment than we would through this bid.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas the Department of Treasury Division of Taxation has provided a tax clearance certificate for the establishment listed below for the renewal period, and whereas the establishment has been inspected by the Board of Health, Fire Department, Code Enforcement Department, the Police Department of Township of Nutley is in satisfactory condition. Whereas the Director of Division of Alcohol Beverage Control has reviewed special ruling NJSA 33112.39, petition submitted by FNS Maintenance, and has considered all the facts and circumstances related to the inactive status of the license, has determined that the licensee has established good cause in accordance with the statutory requirements to warrant an application for renewal for license number 071633017010 for the 2019-2020 license term. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex State, New Jersey, that the renewal of the plenary retail consumption license be granted to the following licensee effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Establishment name, FNS Maintenance, Pocket License Plenary Retail Consumption License. I move the resolution.
Second. Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Whereas raffle applications were received from the following organizations: St. Mary's Roman Catholic Church, license number 3219 on-premise 50/50 cash raffle, and license number 3319 on-premise merchandise raffle, both to be held Friday, October 25, 2019. Holy Family Catholic Church, license number 3419 on-premise merchandise raffle to be held Thursday, September 19 through Sunday, September 22, 2019. And the HSA Good Shepherd Academy license number 3519 on-premise merchandise raffle to be held Wednesday, July 31, 2019. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk and the Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex State, New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved and the Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State, New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized, to refund $280 to Artisan Tasty Bites of Vicaribrian Breeze, 2007, Hanover Street, Pemberton, New Jersey, for a refund payment for Farmer's Market vendor fee. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Whereas the New Jersey Department of Treasury Division of Taxation has provided a tax clearance certificate for the establishment listed below for the renewal period, and whereas the establishment has been inspected by the Board of Health, Fire Department, Code Enforcement Department, and Police Department of Township of Nutley is in satisfactory condition. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex State, New Jersey, that the renewal of plenary retail consumption license be granted to the following licensee effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Be it further resolved, the Municipal Clerk be, and she is hereby directed and authorized to issue said licensee, license for the license period July 1 through June 30, 2020. Huddle Sports Bar and Grill, 350 Passaic Avenue, Plenary Retail Consumption License. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Epstein.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Good evening, Mayor Scarpelli. I'm Dr. Christina Murphy with 45 Montler Avenue. I'm here with Rosemary Gabe, who is my committee member chair. We actually represent the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, and we're here on behalf of the West Essex Walk that will be taking place on October 20 in Verona Park. Rosemary happens to be a resident of Verona, and I and our fellow colleagues want to invite everyone here in Nutley to participate and ask us any questions that you may have on how we can get more people here in Nutley involved in preventing suicides from happening. As you know, suicide is a huge problem, not only in our community, but also across communities in New Jersey and across the country. And we're here to actually educate people who have been touched by this tragedy, as well as to help as many people as possible prevent this from ever happening again. So, we would just love to see Nutley, in the spirit of them helping so many others in other parts of our community, help those that may be suffering as well from suicide.
Can you say a word, a couple words?
Oh, yeah, sure. Um, well, I actually got some cars for you guys, I think my question's sitting on the front of the seat tomorrow. Thank you. Um, I have been volunteering for about three years with this organization. AFSP focuses on research, education, advocacy, support, and outreach in a lot of communities. It's a great volunteer opportunity that I've become involved in, I'm very proud to be involved in it. I think it's made a difference in our community already, not only in the community, but on the, in the way we have changed over the course of a couple of years. So, I would, we have, the walk that we started was originally called the Verona Park Walk, and we branched out and changed it to the West Essex Walk, to involve a lot of other towns in this, you know, opportunity to make a difference. So...
Can you give us the date of the walk again?
Yeah, it's October 20.
So, I could tell you that three Commissioners up here are very involved with mental health. We understand.
Thank you.
The issue with suicide prevention and suicide awareness, and we'll see how we can participate.
Great.
But we thank you for coming and letting us know about that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor. Commissioner Rogers is the Director of the Department of Public Affairs and Health. I like what I hear, and I like what I hear because for about a year, and these gentlemen don't even know this, so I'm not going to get too involved into what I'm going to say, for about a year, we've been working on a very significant project that'll really impact what you're talking about, and I'm hoping that the project we're working on will go national, and it'll come right out of Nutley. So, I'm going to ask you to do me a favor. We do have a therapist on staff working with the county, and Commissioner Tucci were instrumental in that, bringing Vince on board. He's talked to a lot of veterans. I know of two who were really on the verge of taking their lives, and he was able to prevent that through the therapy that we are now providing them. But I, I'm going to ask, I'm going to get your card, and I'm going to ask Vince or someone on our staff to give you a call tomorrow, and maybe we could kind of marry up and include you in what we're doing. But specifically, do you, would you work on veterans, their families? That's very important, because there's been an increase nationally of veterans just killing themselves.
Yeah.
And so, we need help in that area.
It is, it's a very important aspect of the outreach that AFSP works towards. I know in the town where I live, we, over the course of the three years, we've offered various educational programs. There is one program in particular that we just offered, and this is all through the funds that we raised in the Out of the Darkness Walk. Mental Health First Aid. It's a great program. We just offered it a couple months ago, and basically, everybody that took the program was able to become certified in how to react in a mental health crisis.
Who funded you?
Um, it's all grassroots, public donations.
Oh, so you're a nonprofit?
It's a nonprofit, yeah.
Okay.
So, um, the other program that we ran that I was really proud of was It's Real College and Mental Health, and we gave that to the high school seniors that were, you know, going on to college.
Okay. That's fine. And I ask because one of the, one of the components we're looking at is government business partnerships, not locally. But what you're doing is something I think is an important component. But I'll, I'll have someone call you tomorrow.
Okay.
And if I get your card, which I will before I leave, and maybe we could set up and talk. But thank you.
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Ladies, if you, if I, if I might, if there's any way we can help you publicize this, we would be happy to, because like the Mayor, I'm also involved with the mental health agency.
That's a really great question. And when we, we've had the towns that we, we have West Caldwell, Caldwell, Verona, Cedar Grove, a bunch of towns that we've already contacted, but they put it on their calendar. So, I could send, you know, the information that could get uploaded to your social media posts.
Yeah, we can, we can put it on our, on our website here locally, you know, I can do that in conjunction with the Governor and Commissioner Rogers.
That's a great way of getting the word out.
And I can also put it on my mental health agency's website.
Okay.
All right, so we can get the widest reach possible, so people can understand what's going on, when it's happening, and how they can get involved.
Okay.
It's a very worthwhile cause, something I'm very passionate about, so thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you both for coming tonight. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners?
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, I do have a concern, one issue that you have on your agenda for this evening, you're going to vote on 18419, I believe it is, for the huddle? It's my understanding that the state of New Jersey has a hold against it, and their hold is extended to August 8. I don't have all the details for it, but I respectfully request that this be held until at least, is that justified?
Mr. Mayor, I can, I can interject, that was, that was cleared by the state today. We found out today.
That's, we're clear on that?
Yeah.
That was my only concern?
Yeah, they were clear, they were taxed.
Okay. And one last thing, Mr. Evans, I owe you an apology from last time, because I cited a paper from 44 Friedman, and I cited the wrong block a lot, and you corrected me, you said that they do change. When I talked to Mr. Nogba, they said they never change. That was my misunderstanding, and I do owe you apology for that.
I appreciate that, Rory.
I have, I have two other things, but I'll save them for next, next time. Thank you.
Go get some rest, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Rhonda Froboz, 312 East Passaic Avenue, Nutley. Hi, Mayor Scarpelli. The reason why I came here today, first, I wanted to thank you, Mayor Dr. Scarpelli, Commissioner Tucci, and Commissioner Evans, for not hesitating to support our residents when I requested that Nutley make a public statement in support of our LGBTQ residents in honor of June being Pride Month. You didn't hesitate. I have to tell you, that wasn't what I expected. I thought I would come here and ask, and you would say, "I'll get back to you." You didn't hesitate. Thank you. It means a lot. I want to let you know that since that happened, and since it was in the news that you gave the town of Nutley this proclamation, people have reached out to me that I didn't even know. I've been here for about 30 years now, I know a lot of people, even if it's just by name, people that I didn't even know reached out to me and said, "Thank you," which I then said, "Please thank the Mayor and the Commissioners." So, I hope they contacted you too, because they thought they were all alone. And they were afraid their children grew up, if they were a parent of a gay or transgender or bisexual child, moved away, didn't want to stay in Nutley. And these parents were told, "Don't talk about it." Times are changing, and I think one of the reasons times are changing is because of the internet and social media, it tends to amplify voices and messages. And prior to the internet, the messages that we heard were primarily negative, because people who did show support did it quietly. And my message is, it's time to not be quiet anymore, because that wasn't working, and you heard, and I want to thank you. I do want to say that one person said, and I think this is important, that she was happy for me and my child, as if I did this just for two people in Nutley, me and my child. This is for all of Nutley. All of Nutley expressing you as leaders, taking the leadership role and expressing support for the LGBTQ residents of Nutley. It helps not only the LGBTQ residents and their families, but it, you know, we're all related to, live next door to, work with, on a daily basis interact with people who are LGBTQ, and we may not even know it. So, when we remove the mystery, we remove the shame, and discover that we have new friends and new relationships. And I think this is important, if I just may give you a couple of statistics here. If we're all interested in mental health, as we say that we are, and the high rates of suicide, it also affects in a very strong way the LGBTQ community. According to the Human Rights Campaign's 2019 LGBTQ Youth Report, only 13% of youth report hearing positive messages about being LGBTQ in school. This means 87% of youth hear either nothing or negative messages about being LGBTQ. And when LGBTQ topics are not talked about, they're perceived as taboo, something to be ashamed of, and inappropriate. If a child, student, or adult identifies as LGBTQ, they feel the shame of not being normal. And this is why we have high rates of suicide, which Nutley is not immune to. So, I want to thank you, three Commissioners, for signing what I think is Nutley, for Nutley a historic document, because this is the first acknowledgement from Nutley, that Nutley is an inclusive community, and that we're making a commitment to support our LGBTQ residents and their families. And I'd like to ask the two Commissioners who didn't sign this proclamation, if they would sign the proclamation today. I have a pen.
I, I, I'll say this to you, Rhonda, and I know we've been courting each other via email lately, in between a lot of our own personal trials, and I have to tell you, I sat on this board for 12 years, 12 years, was the mayor of this town, and I have to tell you, and I know we've discussed this in via email a little bit, I know politicians are supposed to have thicker skin and fight for what they believe in, like you're a mother and you're fighting for what you believe in. But I have to tell you, the comments that I've read-
I've read on the internet, that you and I kind of, no, not that you wrote, but you were, you were in that conversation, true. You never responded.
I said, "Do not speculate."
Right.
Ask Commissioner Petracca.
But I have to tell you, and let me finish, please. I have never been so hurt in my life to sit up here, to get ridiculed from some people. Some people-
Am I ridiculing you?
Actually, some people-
Are you going to take this out on the LGBTQ community?
Excuse me?
Are you going to take out what some people say on the internet?
No, 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 I just wanted to make a point. I just, I just like to make a point, though.
Okay.
Okay? Because, you know what, it seems like when you have a business in town, you're easy pickings for every time you might not do something that everybody agrees with. The first thing I see on the internet is "Boycott Petracca's Deli." And I have to tell you, it's getting old for me.
Why are you addressing this with me?
No, because I assure you that your name was on that, that-
Let's be clear, I have nothing to do with that statement.
Okay. But there was people saying that. So what I wanted to say to you tonight is this, you know, I almost feel like, like you said in your email, I was the first person to come up to you and congratulate you and say, "Wow, I really admire your courage." And I didn't say compassion, like you said in the email, but I'll say it tonight. But I have to tell you, Rhonda, I have never felt so upset on an issue of reading about how people want to affect my family, my living in this town, after I've done so much for this community. When you walk in Petracca's Deli, or you walk in Public Safety, we don't ask any questions. You know what we ask? How can we help you? That's what we ask.
Commissioner Petracca, so it's on the record, just so you know, anytime anyone asks me where you stood, I said, "Ask Commissioner Petracca."
Okay, and I appreciate that. So what I want to tell you tonight is too, at the last, the meeting before, when I walked in, you know my mother's situation, and my mother would be mortified if her health was discussed at these meetings. She'd be mortified, because she's a very private woman. I told you that night, I didn't have a problem with it, but I did say to Mayor Scarpelli that night, "You know what? I'm a Roman Catholic, I go to church, I believe in God, my mother's having troubles, and I just wanted to check with my clergy to make sure that I wasn't violating any of my personal beliefs." But to read that stuff on the internet, I have to tell you, it's very upsetting. But I'll tell you, Rhonda, tonight, I don't, after checking my clergy, I don't have a problem signing the proclamation. And I am a person that has never, ever judged anyone in my life. And if you don't know that, and I believe you do, because we know each other, but if there's people on that internet that don't know who Al Petracca is, everybody is welcome in our community.
Commissioner Petracca, with what you're saying now, I'm sure that your message will come across very clearly, and you can put a stop to any of that talk with signing onto this proclamation. And I will make sure that you receive an apology-
Well, I, I-
-from anybody who said anything.
Listen, listen, when we sign up for these jobs, I don't need anybody's apology. But I have to tell you, down the road in the future, you know, there's nobody in their twenties on this board, including myself. If we want quality people to keep running for these spots so we keep our town vibrant and moving forward, you know what, we should think twice before some of the people asking us to protect them, they should protect us and our businesses in town too, because we have children and we have families as well that we're trying to take care of. So, I'm my own person, Rhonda, as you know, I don't mince my words. But I have to tell you, this one was really, and I'm not blaming you, okay? I'm not blaming you, and I'm not blaming anybody, but this, I wanted on the record tonight, that, you know what, if we don't agree with a topic, and it's one topic out of a thousand, that that makes us bad people because we believe something different than some, and it's not with your organization, with some other organization? You know, this is a national topic, obviously, but I have to tell you, I could take a lot, but when people want to start attacking your livelihood because you, because your mother's sick and you had to run out of a meeting, and it happens to be an ex-town worker here, wife that's on that site, it's shameful. And it takes all the punch out of doing something good in front of these children, that we've always put Nutley's kids first before everybody, and set the example as role models. So, I'm not upset with you, but I am passionate for this subject. I don't ever want it to be received that somebody's going to bully me into doing something that I don't want to do. I, I sign papers every day, and I read what I sign, and I know what I'm signing. But to get attacked on the internet, and I'm not perfect, and sometimes things are said, and maybe they're true, maybe they're not, but this time, everybody's far off base, and it's insulting. And it takes the spirit of this proclamation of people getting bullied for people bullying me and my family. My kids have never gotten involved in one subject, or my wife. My wife has never come to this meeting, or my children. I only came because I knew you were coming tonight, Rhonda, or I'd be with my mother tonight. That's where I would be. And you know what? My kids and my wife wanted to come here and tell everybody what kind of person Al Petracca really is, because that interception on the internet really is not called for.
Listen, at the end of the day, I think we want the same thing, and we don't want another person to feel so unwelcome and shamed that they, they don't want to get out of bed or they take their own life. Am I right? Are we all on the same page about that?
Listen, we're, we're all on the same page. You know what? There's, there's a lot of groups that have mental illness and, you know, things, and, you know, it's a national topic, and I'm not willing to discuss the inclusion part of it, all that stuff. I am willing to sign the proclamation because I believe in the people, the good people in that organization and the, in the, in the group. But like I said, some of these comments, even as elected official, they get old.
Right, taken.
Thank you, Rhonda. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Hey, me, Mayor. Hey, everybody. Nicholas Cosrally, I live on 114 Myrtle Avenue. I bought the house a few years ago on the northeast corner, and the railroad runs between my house. There's a lot that the town owns that is exempt from building, but it's, it's small. I'm just looking for guidance on how I can sort of maybe acquire that, not for building purposes, but kids run through there.
Mr. Cosrally, excuse me, you can call me, and we could talk about that. There is a method, a process to do that.
Yeah.
So why don't you, I'll give you my card, and you can call me tomorrow, and we'll talk about it.
Perfect. Yeah, so that's why I came tonight for guidance.
If that's okay with you, Mayor.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. But we can, we can talk to you about that.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Just, do you have a map of it? Do you have a-
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
And I can come again.
Give it to me before you leave.
Okay.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing that, we need a motion to go into executive session to discuss, Mr. Jena Tempo?
Contract negotiation.
Contract negotiations.
Contracts, I'm sorry.
Contracts. Motion? Make that motion.
Give me a second. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 permits the exclusion of public for meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, move into closed executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Be it further resolved that a time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and as such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. We will be coming back to open session to close the meeting. There will be no action taken at that time.
The time is 7:52.